Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, I'd like to call to order the CRA work session. Uh, today is June 7th.
Alexis, are you still in Florida?
What?
No, I actually came back to DC, but I happen to be in Boston today. Uh, it's here over the weekend and stayed in there today, but I'll be back in DC tomorrow.
Oh, really?
Oh, we're muted, so we just have to...
Hey, Street Sense team, good morning from West Palm.
Good morning, Raphael, how are you?
Morning.
We're good, we're just getting going. Um, we're, we are, uh, kinda new with the situ-, with the system here in the chamber, so if you guys would mute yourselves until we're called to order, then I'll come bring, bring you back in.
You got it, we'll do it.
Alrighty. Chesley, you should mute as well.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
It's okay. Listen, it's techno-, yeah, we're all adapting. It's only been a year, but, uh, we're still adapting. Alright, so I just wanted to call to order the CRA work session. And, um, uh, let's dive right in. We've got three commissioners here, so we have a quorum. Um, Mr. Ruge, do you wanna tee this up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. So I appreciate the time this morning. Uh, we have an update on the 314 Clematis project. So, um, Raf, could you bring up where we left off? So if you all recall, back in, I believe it was, uh, December of last year, um, we brought forward a proposal with sort of a roadmap on refurbishing, um, stabilizing, and then ultimately, um, or, I'm sorry, refurbishing or renovating, uh, uh, filling the space with tenants and then stabilizing it with, uh, proper rental rates, um, in a partnership with the Downtown Development Authority, since we own the building at 314 Clematis Street. So where we left off was a recommendation for these following steps. So I'm happy to say that, um, step one, which is the inter-local, is completed. Um, step two is also completed. That's what we're going to go through today, which is the, um, market study that Street Sense has, um, has completed for the space. And then we are already starting the steps for the architectural services and the contractor services, um, in order to actually get the work done. But the market study was really instrumental in understanding what is viable, um, cause that will ultimately guide the, uh, the interior build-out. So I just want to just refresh everybody's, uh, memory on where we left off with this overall project. So with today, um, we are going to hear from Raphael, uh, Street Sense on that market study, and, uh, and then also give you some recommendations for, um, the final design of the space based on these market conditions, but also what we feel was in the original spirit of where we were trying to go with 314, which is breaking up the square footage, um, so that you could have several small businesses, and it actually becoming a place that will become a business generator for the city as, as a whole. So with that, I wanna turn it over to Raphael so that he can introduce, um, Street Sense, our marketing team, and, um, I think you'll be pleased with the information that you'll, you'll hear today. Raphael?
Good morning, everyone. Raphael Clemente, Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority.
Morning.
Remind me one time, I can unmute this now, or I need to keep this muted?
When they need to talk, I can unmute it.
Okay, but if I unmute it, they, can they hear me?
They can hear me.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, so pleased to be here this morning, happy to give this update. Um, we have, uh, as directed by, by you all, procured services from Street Sense. Uh, Street Sense is a consulting group, um, that by, certainly by our measure, uh, is the most qualified to guide us through the process of developing a plan for 314 Clematis. Uh, we have, uh, Chris, your Chris Ruge, uh, myself, Cheryl Moriente, Tanika James, uh, with the DDA. We have all spent a significant amount of time with Street Sense, both virtually and here on the ground in West Palm Beach. Uh, they've done an in-depth analysis, looking at a number of different scenarios uh, for build-out and teneting of the space at 314. Uh, and we've, we've asked them to zero in on, on three. Um, and what you're gonna hear today from them is why these, uh, three different build-out, uh, scenarios or tenant scenarios are what we feel are the best recommendations, and what we would like from you today is some direction on, on how we should proceed, and, uh, we'll hear back from them on maybe what a next step might be. So with that, I'm gonna bring in the Street Sense team. Um, Chesley McCarty, Mike Smith, and Alexis Telster. Uh, and I think, Mike, you're gonna lead the presentation?
I am, yes, thank you. Uh, is now a good time to share?
Yes.
Okay, great. Morning, everyone.
Oh, uh, can you just, um, chime, or just tell them to hold on one more?
Uh, just one more second, so, um, yeah, if there's a question asked, um, just the way the audio is in the room right now, if, if a commissioner or mayor asks a que-, or a mayor asks a question, I'll repeat it so you can hear it.
Okay, great, thanks.
Mayor, Commissioners, everybody understand that? So just because of the technicalities of it, Raphael has to...
Well, good morning, everyone. Um, thank you for joining us. Uh, happy to be here and excited about sharing with you, um, some of the things that we've developed in partnership with, with your team. Um, exciting space, exciting sub-market, and we think that this space, uh, poses a tremendous amount of potential in, in bringing a, a new game changer, a catalyst, to Clematis. Um, and we've explored a few options, uh, including the economics that go along with those. So we've been working with Raphael and team, uh, for the last, uh, several months, um, analyzing, uh, many, many different scenarios with this space. Uh, these scenarios are dictated by market conditions, uh, Clematis itself, and the existing landscape. Obviously, we wanna create something that is, um, supportive of what is happening rather than in competition with. Um, and then also the physical plans, taking into consideration the depth of the space, the column grid, the ceiling heights. All of these things come into play when determining the highest and best use. And these range from, you know, traditional marketplace, or not so traditional, a, a destination marketplace to more traditional uses, just giving you all the complete spectrum of opportunities, um, both large and small, envisioned. And after much deliberation in reviewing the plans and the economics, um, it was deemed that a retail marketplace that includes some sort of community-based office space, this could be anything from an architecture firm or a media company in the alleyway to something that's more progressive in community-serving, an entrepreneurship center, um, a, a commercial kitchen, um, things that, that could be developed in harmony, uh, with a marketplace, rather than two siloed uses. But still balancing the realities of the marketplace, um, the realities of the economics associated with these. Um, and the second choice was just a true, traditional marketplace that was part food-based, part retail-based, and even potentially with, with a grocery element, uh, whether in the form of a public market or more traditional grocery component. You'll see that that second choice is, is split into two different categories. One is what we call a multi-tenant scenario whereby the landlord of the building is curating the market stall by stall, managing the common areas, you know, wiping down the tables, cleaning the bathrooms, making sure the space is secure and so forth. The other option being a single-tenant scenario where one operator is paying the landlord a rent, and that one operator is curating the environment, whether they're operating each stall or subletting each of those stalls. We'll talk about the, the differences between the two, the pros and the cons, a little bit later in this deck. So just a quick synopsis of what our assignment was. First was to take a look, a high-level look at, at the market. That was from a regional perspective, that was looking at West Palm and, and Palm Beach, so the Palm Beaches, uh, and then also Clematis in the downtown West Palm Beach environment. Um, again, knowing that all of these forces impact its commercial viability, excuse me, because at the end of the day, the economics have to sustain themselves, otherwise you'll have a short-lived, um, uh, use and a perpetually dark space, which is what none, nobody wants. Uh, we also looked at the constraints and opportunities with regard to this space, uh, as a whole, and then from there, we worked with our design team and the strategy team to develop, to develop some taste, test fits, along with, um, some supporting economics, uh, to help you all determine the direction of this, uh, of this asset. When we look at the landscape, uh, we've split it up into three distinct competitive environments. I should point out that these are all destination retail environments, so you won't see, uh, um, uh, outlet centers, you won't see neighborhood strip centers. These are Main Street and project-based environments that all compete, at least in some fashion, for a customer base that we've identified as being captive for Clematis, and most specifically for a catalytic development site, uh, here, um, here within this space. So our primary competitors, based on, on distance really, and the fact that they cast a pretty wide net on their user basis, would be Rosemary Square and the 500 block of Clematis. Uh, you could argue that Clematis works as one street, but you could also quite easily argue that the 500 block has a pretty distinct, uh, uh, has distinct qualities and a distinct character, that, again, we should be thinking about this harmoniously, but it is somewhat fragmented from the, uh, the, the rest of Clematis. Secondarily, Grandview Public Market has some destination-like qualities, given the, the nature of, of that marketplace. Northwood Village to the north is, is a more traditional Main Street environment, like Clematis in some ways, but a far less dense, uh, neighborhood, and therefore, the, the audiences that might be captive, uh, in, uh, in downtown West Palm are not captive, um, in Northwood Village. And then Antique Row, similarly, although that has quite a distinct, uh, characteristic in terms of what its offer is. And then lastly, uh, Ponce Anna, uh, is, um, a, a pretty varied project. It is certainly upmarket, not as upmarket as some of the things you see on Worth Ave, but there are users that we think, uh, can be with the right mousetrap captive for, um, for this property on Clematis. The same goes for Worth Avenue. We don't see this as being a luxury environment, but everyone eats, everyone likes social spaces. Not everyone is shopping, uh, for luxury goods, um, uh, seven days a week. And so there's still, we believe, a, an opportunity to, to capture these users. And, you know, when you look at these competitive environments, we have quite a varied set of users across the board. Um, anyone from a five-minute walk, uh, whether they're working or living downtown, to 10, 15, even 20-minute drives. And we do think that with the right curated environment, you can and should cast as wide a net as you can, so that you're maximizing the volume, the sales volume, the productivity, economic productivity of this space. Um, the more productive it is, the more serving it is to, to downtown West Palm. And it just means that identifying the various uses and the, the environment that makes this an approachable place, high-quality but not exclusive, and, uh, and a place that, that everyone feels is their own. And we take a look at this from a, uh, a relatively crude way. This is observational, this is anecdotal way of, of identifying moments in time where we can, uh, create appeal for a varied set of users, whether it's a nearby resident, a nearby office worker, somebody who lives a little bit farther away, 15, 20, even 30-minute drive, and then the tourist. And identifying ways to create more meaningful moments that might build appeal from what is presently, as, again, we're observing, to what we think it could be. And that's building more appeal for the neighborhood residents, so that they might spend more time in the middle of the day, especially if they're working from home. Um, and then also spending more dollars on what would otherwise be slow nights during the week. Um, the same goes for the nearby office worker, creating a place that is not just for lunch, nine-to-five, five days a week, but a place that they might be more inclined to spend a happy hour with, or even have a business meeting as opposed to going somewhere else. A place for regional visitors to put this on their radar, uh, when they come to the, to the Miami and Palm Beach region. How can we create a space that is appealing to a broader set? Um, uh, and that includes the tourist base as well. So when people are thinking about, what am I gonna do this weekend? Or what am I, what am I gonna do on this seven-day trip that I have to South Florida? Uh, we'd like to be on the map. We should be. We believe that you can be. So after looking at the market and taking a look at the space and its, its strengths and challenges, um, we developed a test fit. I should note that this is not a design, this is a test fit. The test fit purpose is to, A, make sure that we can fit these uses within the confines of the space, and from there, build a back-of-the-envelope set of economic assumptions, so that you all know, generally speaking, what this looks like and the direction that you might take to firm up these numbers, to actually design a plan and take this towards the finish line. So I'm gonna turn this over to Alexis to, to articulate, since, uh, she actually, until recently, was, was in, uh, the Palm Beach area, uh, and, um, and has spent time in the space, as have Chesley and I. I, I'm sorry, I should, I, I'm a little bit ahead of myself. Um, I should point out that the details are so important here. And the more uses we can accommodate, uh, within this space, the more of a net we're going to cast. And that is, yes, food and beverage, we think that there is an opportunity for a retail marketplace, a craft bizarre-like component, but also a space that's meant for socializing, whether it's a third place to have an informal meeting or a get-together, or to pop open the laptop and spend eight hours sitting there, working, and, and, and having a cup of coffee in the morning and a lunch, and, and staying for a happy hour. Uh, also, space for performances or community-based events to take place, allowing the space to sort of shape-shift, so that it can be one thing in the morning and something that's a little bit more varied in the afternoon, the evening, or on the weekend. The more we can do this, A, the more we're gonna cast a wide net, but the more, um, the more repeat traffic and loyalty we're going to get. And that also comes into play with, with regard to design. Um, we've all seen a million food halls, fewer retail marketplaces, but a million food halls, and there are, I would argue, more failures than there are successes. It doesn't mean that these are failed experiments, they are, or a failed concept, but rather, the short-sightedness when it comes to design and, and, uh, the texture, and making sure that, A, you've got the right array of uses, but also curated in the right way with the right design treatments, mean that you cast a wider net, you get somebody to stay longer the next time they come, they come more often, and the more we can tug at the emotional, uh, heartstrings of the community, the more pride and ownership and loyalty and positive word-of-mouth you'll get. So Alexis, with that, do you wanna, um, dovetail into these plans?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mike. Good morning, everyone. Um, so as Mike said, we really looked at two scenarios. Um, the first one that we will look at is this 50/50 split, so between the market and the community office. And what's great here is, you know, as you guys know, we're working with great bones. So we have this beautiful historic building, tall ceilings, and also a pretty regular column grid, which for us is always a good thing. So as you'll see with this test fit here, uh, the front half of the space facing Clematis, um, is where we're proposing a market. So we have about 10 stalls, as we're calling them, um, between 200 to 300 square feet, uh, really kind of capturing the column lines, creating this meandering, you know, path as you walk through for some interest, and interspersing that with some communal seating of varied kinds, so people can come in, whether it's to work and grab food, um, to walk around, um, but really creating interest in different experiences as people come through. Those will all, you know, share restrooms, share vendor storage. They'll also have an incubator and events kitchen, and this can really be a flexible space that can serve either the market or the community office. And the way we envision this is really porosity throughout. So as you can see, you'll have great views as you come in through Clematis, really playing with this indoor-outdoor experience, bearing up the storefront there. And then as you come through, the community office will have views to the alley, which we really see as an activated space, possibly creating garage doors or other views, you know, between in and out as well. Then if we go to the next scenario...
Sorry, real quick, Alexis, I just wanted to articulate here that, as, as she alluded to, we've had this, this variation in the storefront. We're moving some of it back to its original position to capture some additional lease-able area. We do think that, that, um, uh, keeping some breathing room, so to speak, on a street that otherwise, as wonderful as it is, and as wonderful as the sidewalk environment is, doesn't have a, you know, ceremonial outdoor public space, um, aside from the foot of the street, um, down by the water. And so we think that this allows for a little bit of that breathing room, um, to accommodate some outdoor seating. Um, you'll also see that the uses, one and two, spaces one and two, are uses that could be active more during the day, um, morning, noon, and night, seven days a week, 12 months a year, whereas some of the other uses, Home and Gifts, for example, might not open until 11. So you want those activating uses to be upfront, to create that strong sense of arrival and activate the street as long as possible. Alright, so scenario one?
Moving to scenario one, you know, we're looking at the space where we can use it holistically as a market, food hall. In this scenario, we can really start to play with the stall sizes. Um, so you'll see, sort of based on color, whether it's the, the purple, the orange, or the green, really, these stalls start to take different shapes and sizes. So it really adds to this flexibility and use and the different experiences you're gonna have. So whether it's a small window that you come up to grab a sandwich, or, you know, it's a coffee bakery where you can, you know, sit down and really spend some more time in. Um, we've also really tried to open up the central space, again, creating these views that really span throughout the entire space from Clematis all the way through to the, to the alleyway. Um, so you do have a variety of seating elements that are really interspersed between these market stalls as well. Uh, these are all backed up, you know, obviously between, you know, communal shared spaces that will support these vendors, uh, and stalls. And then also really playing this idea of, of a community space with this incubator and events kitchen that can open up for, you know, to host, you know, whether it's a pop-up, uh, whether it's rented out, whether it's different event space. But I think that's really a way that we can start to engage the community and also keep this space fresh with a variety of different uses, uh, in here as well.
Yeah, and you'll see that we, we've attempted to, to, uh, you know, harness the synergies, the prospective synergies between the two uses by making sure that there's a strong relationship between the incubator space and the, and the marketplace as a whole. Um, but incubator kitchens can also be active, uh, into the late night as, as people are preparing food for the farmer's market, or, or to supply the stalls that are within the space, and so making sure that they can, um, um, be serviced in a way that, uh, will can occur during off-hours for the market, and also identify ways to activate this alleyway, because it is something that is important to us. Um, we have to, we have to think about this, uh, realistically, in terms of the potential for the alleyway, but it's certainly an opportunity for the marketplace to address the alleyway, um, in a way that's still economically viable. Um, much like the previous plan, you'll see that the seating is distributed quite widely throughout the space. Um, often you'll see food halls that are either in this configuration, or you'll see them in more of a traditional food court environment where all the seating is in the center. We, we prefer the, the, the options where you, you, you distribute that seating so that you get less of that food court, for, excuse me, food court environment, and get more of that visual variation and texture that we think is so important for place-making. As I said earlier, there are two ways to look at this, especially, uh, scenario one, from a multi-tenant perspective and a single tenant. The benefits of a multi-tenant scenario are that the landlord has control over every aspect of this experience. I'm curating the stalls, not just by use, but by the actual tenant types, public space programming, making sure that the cleanliness and the safety of the space is top-notch. Every aspect of this is in, in the landlord's complete control. They're typically more unique than single-tenant environments. You have tenants who do what they do best and only what they do best. The upside potential is higher than with a multi-tenant scenario, which tends to look more like a traditional, large-format restaurant deal. Uh, and, and what I think is most important to consider is, if you think about it like a light fixture, in a multi-tenant scenario, if the bulb goes out, you replace that tenant, you're back in business. There's little to no stigma associated with that turnover. In some cases, these marketplaces have short enough terms for variety and spontaneity that nobody is ever the wiser that the tenant just didn't make it versus it was a controlled turnover. Uh, the challenges associated with a model like this are significantly higher landlord costs. Um, there is that burden of managing the space. Sometimes the costs don't pen in a way that make these models viable. We've determined that technically, the cost of managing this space is less than the rent that would be collected by the landlord, meaning that's a, that's a, that's a positive cash flow. Uh, but the cost to operate can be quite significant, and it's on the landlord's, um, it's, it's the landlord's burden to be subject to increases in costs and so forth for management. It does also, in some ways, yield, uh, a, a less efficient plan. When you have a single, single-tenant model, you have a lot more economies of scale when it comes to back-of-house and so forth, some sharing of spaces. So the benefit is a lower landlord cost, uh, limited landlord responsibilities. The economics are pretty straightforward, like I said, um, more like a large-format restaurant, and the, the plan can be quite efficient. But that lack of landlord control means you're putting all of that control into an operator who might look great, um, when you sign the lease, maybe not so great the day they open. And tenants, you see it in every type of tenant, including the best restaurants, tend to get a little stale over time. And so you not only relinquish that control, but you're also beholden to just the ebbs and flows of how tenants treat their spaces and, uh, and sell businesses for that matter. Um, they're less unique typically, because you get tenants who, who just aren't there doing what they do best, especially if, if that space or use is controlled by that one landlord. The high replacement cost is something that is quite notable. If that whole space goes dark, oh, there's this tremendous sunk cost on the part of the landlord. They're contributing tenant improvement dollars and shell upgrade dollars, and there's a stigma. There's a cloud that hangs over that space as there was a use that didn't work in an otherwise large space that has a limited number of backfilling use potentials, especially with that cloud hanging over it. And there is less landlord upside potential. You get much like leasing space to a, to a restaurant. Certainly, there's the opportunity for percentage rent, but there's less of an investment on the landlord, meaning there's less of a re-, a reward from landlord's perspective. So we'll, we'll dovetail into the economics. At the highest level, and we should focus on these per-square-foot columns. Um, certainly, we've, we've included the totals, just so everyone knows what these really look like. Scenario two, as a reminder, is 50% marketplace upfront, 50%, some sort of community office space in the back. As you might imagine, community office space carries with it a less, uh, significant development cost. The build-out cost of these spaces is significantly less than a, than a marketplace. So is the income. And so when you see less of an investment, you'll also see less of the income. I'll remind you all that these are back-of-the-envelope assumptions, so once there's a direction on, well, once there is a movement on direction, these should all be vetted through a contractor. They don't take into consideration local construction costs, cyclical construction costs, as we're all very, very aware of at this very moment. Um, but they are true back-of-the-envelope assumptions, based on our own experience and a combination of both business consultants and business development consultants and, and architects. Um, moving on to scenario one, the multi-tenant market scenario. It's the, the highest development cost. These costs represent, uh, any sort of shell upgrades, storefront, uh, replacement costs, and the build-out of common areas, um, from, from a finishes perspective, and then also building out each stall. And those costs include everything except for, um, uh, tenant, tenant, uh, identifying millwork, so very, very light finishes that separate one, that's one tenant from the next, um, signage and small equipment. Everything else is what we would call turnkeyed. The tenant moves in, they can, you bring in these small amount of fixtures and, and, uh, and upgrade the millwork as they see fit, but they're ready to go and turn on the lights and, and be in business. The, the scenario one with the single-tenant environment, as I said, it's like a traditional, uh, large-format restaurant deal. There's some shell upgrade costs, some storefront costs, and then the rest is in the form of a tenant improvement allowance. Um, and you'll see it's quite a range. It all depends on the quality of the operator, it depends on that unique point in time of the market conditions when it comes to available space and the number of prospects who are out there looking for spaces like these. And I should point out that, much like that light fixture analogy that I gave you all, the, the bench of, of prospects of, of small tenants to take stalls is going to be much deeper than the bench of prospects who will take the entire space and, and take on that entire space burden. Um, and it's quite a significant difference. So it's something to take into consideration when you think about the realities of leasing this space from a landlord's perspective. But again, the more of an investment in the space, the more rent, uh, that the space carries. And so the most economically productive, um, spaces, we see it from both a sales perspective and a rent perspective, is in the multi-tenant scenario one, uh, markets. Another thing to, um, and I see here, um, sorry, I'm just looking at the chatroom. I'll, I'll keep this moving along. So I just wanted to share with you all how we calculate, uh, the economics here. We look at it from a market rent perspective, but what's risky about that is that market rents, uh, have a lot of nuance to them, seldom which is made public. But more importantly, a comp is a, is a point in time, and typically is a cycle, which is anywhere from five to 10 years. If you're getting a market comp from the end of a cycle, it's typically not sustainable, economically sustainable for the next cycle. So we look at profitability, which is respect, reflected in these rent-to-sales ratios. Every use carries with it a, uh, its own unique, um, set of profit margins. We pair that against sales projections for each of those uses, and that spits out a gross rent potential. From there, we, um, we sub out the cost to operate the space, and that's what gets you these, these net rent projections. So, uh, we will distribute this for people's digestion. Um, and if there are any questions on the economics, obviously, we'll be happy to handle those. As I said earlier, the details are so important. This is just a hypothetical theme, but a theme nonetheless, we think, is, is highly important. And the theme doesn't mean that it's hokey or contrived. It just means that every aspect, from curation, to design, to branding, to programming, is all done under one, uh, succinct brand, uh, um, brand identity. We've paired just some local uses that are reflective of the types of uses that we think would be successful here, um, because of the product, offering the experience, the design, the transparency between food production and the consumer. Um, and then also from a retail perspective, uh, having a peek into things being made, uh, perhaps, uh, a, a reg-, a regular rotation of uses that have that, encourage that spontaneity. Um, serving the neighborhood, whether it's through, through flowers or just more aesthetically pleasing and comfortable restrooms. Engaging the consumer and the user in the right way is key. Engaging the consumer and the user in the right way is key. And then as I said earlier, office space, it's not traditional office. It's transparent, it's community engaging. We believe that it's something that is, um, not just in high demand, but in short supply, especially in such a centrally, uh, located space like this and highly synergistic with a market, with a marketplace and then also the opportunity to diversify from an economic perspective. And then programming these spaces with, with ways to engage the community morning, noon, night, seven days a week, a variety of, of user types, uh, both, both personal and professional daytime and weekend. These are great ways to forge connections with the community. So I apologize for rushing through those last few slides, but I just want to make sure that we stay relatively on time. And Raphael, I'll, I'll open it back up to you.
Uh, Mike, Chesley, Alexis, thank you very much. And, and, um, having worked with you all, um, I can say that I'm sure that there was a lot more detail you could have gone into, but, uh, unfortunately we don't have a whole lot of time this morning. Um, I'm just gonna turn it over to the mayor and commission for questions. I'll relay them to you so you can hear them.
Uh, thank you very much. Very interesting and, and, and well done presentation. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure of the technicalities, Raphael, if everyone can hear on the screen or not.
Uh, they can't. I'll tell, I'll tell them.
Okay. Um, well, I'll, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So thank you very much for the presentation. I think for me, it comes down to two scenarios because when we started into this, the idea was to get as much community engagement as possible. A, a single tenant market does not do that. We have a lot of single tenant markets along Clematis Street. So it really comes down to scenario one, multi-tenant and scenario two, 50/50 market. And I have to say, when I first looked at 50/50 scenario, I thought, well, that's a lot of space blocked out for just office space. But I think looking at the presentation, you can see that it's, it's an open office space and has activation. So I tend to favor over to that side because it would allow for activation within the space on off-peak hours of mealtime. Um, but what I would be interested in taking a look at, you know, we're looking at build-out costs and rent. And I think it's a little bit of a misnomer because build-out costs are gonna have a huge impact year one because it's cash out of hand, but there's gonna be a break-even point somewhere down the line. So do we have any idea on, on each one of these scenarios, like a five to 10-year financial analysis? Have we gone that far or we're just kind of in this first interim step?
Sure. So we, we haven't fully fleshed out the business model, um, because we were just doing the market rate study right at this point. Um, but, uh, because the other decision about this is how long is this gonna stay within the CRA's purview? Um, ideally, I mean, we could flesh out depending on which scenario you, you choose, um, how long it would take to recoup the costs, both that we've paid to purchase the building, but then also the money that it's going to take to refurbish it. And, uh, keep in mind that, that 142, that landlord cost under the 50/50 is turnkey. The idea is that we come in under that. Um, again, with our goal of trying to keep it as close to $100 a square foot as possible, which is more of a white box scenario, where we work with the businesses on their specific needs and have them put a little, um, capital into the project as well to build out how they want to do it. So with all of that, that's a lot of moving parts to really understand just truly how much it's gonna, how long we'll have to hold on to it and what we could take in order to get our investment back out of the building. So, but, um, I think if, once we get the direction from you all, which scenario you want to go with, we can definitely lay out that business plan about what it's going to look like as well as the additional steps to keep the project moving forward, if that's what you like.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate that. And I think certainly the economic picture is, is what's driving behind this, but also understanding the market did not drive this, which is why it ended up in the hands of the CRA in the first place. So my anticipation is not that there's going to be some kind of giant upside to this, to the city. The upside to me is being able to get not only small businesses in office spaces or potentially in their own brick and mortar type space within this. So, uh, to me, I think that plays in the scenario too. Obviously in the financials, we want to try to recoup our investment to, at the very least break even, if not make a profit that can be rolled into other programs and, and really help take this space off. But, um, I think the more we can look down the road, and again, thank you for the, the first blush of this, this presentation. Um, I think that is something that's kind of hidden in here because it looks like a lot of money on the upfront, because it is. Your capital investment is gonna be huge on the upfront, but there's a payback period for that along the way, and I think that's important to consider too.
Um, so, so in summary, um, Street Sense team, uh, the question was obviously the upfront costs right now, the build-out costs, um, you know, whether that's the full turnkey build-out or a portion of it coming from the public sector. Um, the desire to look, uh, at a long-term economic outcome, a five or 10-year scenario, which, you know, maybe, maybe we work on that, uh, as a future option, but that was the question that was just posed by, um, or the comment, I should say, by, um, Commissioner Shoff. So, and anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, we, we can certainly provide a detailed year-by-year analysis. We're recommending five-year terms for these tenants, uh, to, uh, to encourage spontaneity and, and what we call healthy turnover. And, uh, with each, with it, with each turn of a space, you can pick up more rent than you otherwise would from a traditional two to three percent a year, uh, rent bump, uh, to help you, uh, capture more of your, recapture more of your costs, uh, moving forward. So we're happy to do that. Happy to do that.
Great, thank you. And, and I'll just add very briefly, um, I think, you know, as we saw with the thoroughfare market, it was just the small portion of the patio. Um, the, beyond just the economic return is the, the return to the public realm and the energy and ambiance on our main street. Uh, and that, there, that is a, that is a valuable outcome beyond just the dollars. Yes.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Thank you all for this presentation. It's really exciting. Um, I guess, Mike, I'm, I am leaning towards the scenario of the 50/50 as well. Um, I think my concern is just in talking about the management of it, that, you know, have, have you thought about how that would work in terms of, you know, now we're gonna be managing, getting the rent every month and finding the tenants and someone's late for rent and somebody, you know? Have we thought about how, who would be, you know, in charge of that? Is it, do we need to find somebody else to organize that or, um, just if you could talk a little bit more about what that would look like?
Um, and, uh, in, in a nutshell, we have thought about that, um, and I think amongst ourselves, and Cheryl was very, Cheryl was, was the manager, not, she was not hands-on with it. She was the manager of the thoroughfare. Um, but the scenario that we've thought of as the best scenario is that 314 is its own, uh, corporation and it has its own finances, it runs as a, as a business and hires a manager. Um, but again, I'll, I'll plug this to the Street Sense folks. So the question from Commissioner Fox, um, was a management scenario for this and have we thought that through? My comment was that yes, we, we hear locally, um, Chris and Cheryl and I thought the best model is that 314 is its own corporation, um, hires a manager, et cetera. But if there's models out there that you would recommend, we would be, um, interested in hearing them.
Well, if, if I understand the term management correctly, when, when we think of a single-tenant model, it's either done in two ways. One is a traditional lease with a tenant and, um, they're paying rent, they're getting tenant improvement allowance like a large format restaurant, or there is, the, the ownership is solely in the hands of the landlord and they're paying somebody to manage it. So that comes in the form of a 3%, 3% to 5% management fee, sometimes a bit of a cut, an additional cut of, of some upside potential, but the landlord owns it. And all of the upside, for the most part, goes to the landlord, extremely risky however, because you've invested in 100% of the, of the expenses and the costs and, um, there is no, there is no risk burden on the, on the part of the, uh, of the tenant or the manager, the management deal. Um, I'll add to that, um, when we looked at the multi-tenant scenario, we did a very detailed operating budget to make sure that the operating expenses did not exceed what we believe to be the rent potential, that would be a money loser. So we did do a very detailed management budget for a multi-tenant scenario that, again, the landlord is, is, is curating, but they are leasing those spaces out to tenants. Am I, am I understanding the question properly?
I think so. Was that accurate, Commissioner Fox?
Yeah, I think so. I think just, I'm worried about us getting into a business of being, you know, looking for tenants and chasing rents and things like that. That's not what we're really in the business to do right now. So I was just looking for what the strategy would be if we went that way. But I do have a follow-up. I guess if we were gonna look at the single-tenant scenario, is there, would there be parameters that they would have to follow this model or they could really build out anything that they wanted to do in there?
Uh, the question was on, in a single-tenant scenario, would there be parameters that we would follow for tenant type or, or build-out?
Well, I think what we're talking about here mostly has been this marketplace or community office or things like that, but what if a single tenant came in and wanted something completely different?
There would be some style guideline. I'm sure, you want to speak to that a little bit? Hold on, uh, Street Sense.
Sure. I'm Cheryl Moriente, manager of urban placemaking for the DDA. Um, I think that, um, it, no matter how we're doing this, um, this is really curating what the architect will do and design, and then the management would be supplementing how to run that. So even in a single-tenant scenario, there, there would have to be some parameters in place of like, this is what we are working as a partner, uh, not like, here's the keys and you can do as you wish. Uh, so I think it really comes down to how we write that agreement, uh, to ensure that this is protected.
Yeah, if I could add.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, um, so a couple of things, Commissioner Fox. So I think of it, um, uh, and I, i- is similar to Grandview Market where, you know, there's a single person that, um, has a lease rate with the landowner, so we would lease it to them and then they would essentially plug in all of the different players into the space. Um, and they would, it would be built based on the lease that we would have for that single tenant. And, you know, we would say, well, this is what we want as a landlord. On, um, on the other operations, um, something that we, we had talked about as far as, um, having, um, y- you know, incorporated and things like that is, because I, I agree with you, but the last thing I want to do is manage leases and chase people around and things like that and having that, um, operator essentially be an employee of the space because they don't have any risk. I think the idea, um, when we're thinking about exit strategy, because that's always on my mind, both because we want to see the taxes generated out of this building as well as our economic development goals, is thinking about how we build in some type of, um, exit strategy where maybe the operator is identified and it's, um, it's a lease to own or something like that, where the operator understands that at the end of the day, there's a greater reward or, um, ability to, um, have a, a part of ownership in some way. But again, we haven't, you know, those are all just discussions, but, um, the exit strategy in our mind is always there and it's always part of the analysis. And I think any of these scenarios offer a variety of different ways that ultimately this project ends up back in the hands of the private sector.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. And I'm, I'm curious about this market study. Did we evaluate whether or not there's, or did we evaluate the level of interest in each of these scenarios? Is there a opportunity for someone to come in who, you know, in our area who's looking to be a single tenant, who would operate something like what you just described?
You mean in terms of the tenant type, like a taco shop or a, or a flower stand?
Well, either scenario. So in either scenario that you all have presented, do we know that there are, I, I don't know if that was part of the market study. Do we know that there are potential players in each of those scenarios?
And, uh, so the, the question from Commissioner Christina Lambert is, in the market study on the, um, on the multi-tenant scenario or, or single tenant, but where there, you have market stall operators, um, it, uh, to what degree did you go in determining demand for the various types of uses that are plugged in there for the scenario?
Um, you know, we, we considered the demand for the use as a whole, for, for the food hall component, for the retail marketplace component, for which we think that there's a considerable amount. Um, what makes it more complicated to do a demand analysis for each of those uses is a, is for a couple of reasons. One is the point in time, you know, these types of uses, these quick serve uses, uh, sort of ebb and flow, they come and they go. And so if we were to do that analysis today, the odds are when this thing launches, uh, it would be less relevant. I think more importantly, these uses, this array of uses are, uh, are, are, are assigned to each space with two purposes. One is so that collectively they create the most magnetic of mousetraps. They work in harmony with each other. You won't see any highly niche uses that are attractive or appealing to a very, very small customer segment. Those are incredibly risky and they exist in high-density places like New York City where they have destination appeal. For here, we're trying to create a well-rounded, and not generic, but a well-rounded mix of uses and placing them in the right places within this box so that you're, you're curating the right experience from the moment you walk in the door to the moment you, you work your way back to the space. Now that being said, it is just a test fit, but it does reflect, you know, just the general principles of how we would lay out a space and the uses that we think are highest and best used and cast the widest net from an economic perspective.
And I'll add to, uh, Mike Smith's answer, is that as long as, as we can look back, Clematis has suffered from a lack of small spaces and there has been consistently demand for, uh, a smaller operator to find a toehold on our main street or close, or close to our main street where we have the highest foot traffic, the, the greatest concentration of, of users. Uh, and the, the few small spaces that there are, they have tended to do well and I'll, and I'll cite Finer Optics as one. Um, Russ Griffin has been a retailer on Clematis for over 20 years. He's had better and better, better and better years, year over year, and he's a single operator, one-off, you know, kind of, of user. Um, the space that we're talking about, 314, was Woolworth's historically. Uh, we had J.C. Penney's on our main street, we had Burdine's. So we were the big box destination before the suburbs existed. So our challenge as a, as a CRA board, as a DDA director, is how do you adapt these big box spaces to main street uses in the year 2021, where the world is a completely different place? And that's why this scenario seems to be an attractive one for a 14,000 square foot ground floor space.
That's a good follow-up, Mayor. Thank you. And I, I recall when we made the decision to purchase this location, that there was a lot of talk about entrepreneurial ship and incubator space. Um, I'm curious, you know, the different scenarios that you gave, one had the, um, kitchen incubator space at 250 square feet, the other had it at 1,500 square feet. I don't know if you or the team could talk about the different mindsets in each of those scenarios?
That's whether or not I'm coming to dinner. Kitchen size, okay, okay.
What's that?
I was making a bad joke about whether or not I'm coming to dinner, how big your kitchen needs to be. Um, uh, the question, uh, for the Street Sense team was on the incubator kitchen, um, there were a couple of scenarios where you had it smaller or larger. Um, what was the rationale behind that?
Alexis, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some flexibility within there. Um, I think it's smaller in the case where the market itself is smaller, so obviously it's supporting less occupants. Um, and then in the larger scenario, in this other scenario where we include the entire footprint as the market, it's larger again to support sort of the volume of people and programming that we anticipate in that space.
Uh, thank you. Was it envisioned that the, um, the incubator kitchen would, you, you did mention it, but maybe you could delve into it a little more. For example, um, vendors at our green market, um, could use that as a commercial kitchen or commissary kitchen to prepare goods for sale, um, in a, in one of our best events really, uh, in our downtown.
Yeah, that's what it's intended to be, is a place for, depending on the size, a place not just for tenants within the market, but also for those outside. So if you make a great Rice Krispie treat and you want to take it to the farmer's market, that's the place for you. And actually, the benefit of a space of that size and that utility means that you are even more community-serving than you otherwise would have been. The size can also dictate the opportunity for events, you know, events within that commercial kitchen, cooking classes and so forth, yet one more opportunity to engage the community. So you can take a very practical approach and say this is lean and mean, very efficient because they don't, um, carry a, a, a significant, um, uh, income potential. Or if you're looking at it differently, you know, casting a wider net, being, becoming more of a, a place for the broader community.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Warren.
Hi, um, Raphael, you touched upon a lot of the things that I was thinking about. And I want to say that I too have concerns about the costs and the, how long it's gonna take before we see a return on the investment that we're, that we're making here. Um, but I do believe that this is very progressive and that this is going to appeal to people that are forward-thinking and non-traditional and have a different approach to how they want to do business. What I like about scenario one is that it adds a different dimension to the way that we are currently doing business downtown. Um, we know that the rents are high. We know that when there's turnover, that the spaces are open for a very long time. This, uh, really would allow us an opportunity to appeal to a broader sense of people and allow them the opportunity to grow their business and to thrive and be successful without some of the traditional, um, roadblocks. some of the traditional roadblocks that the people have had as they've started businesses. So I am looking forward to hearing more information so that some of these unknowns can be addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Just the comment from Commissioner Warren was that this is a forward-looking approach and that, in her opinion, that we are going to see demand based on the fact that this type of thing does not exist in our downtown. And Mike, if you could take us to the day part demand, the future scenario day part demand?
Yep. There we are.
And so, yes, thank you, that's the one. So what I really like about this type of an analysis is that when we zoom out a little bit and look at what's happening in our city with the tremendous amount of office investment coming to the general downtown area, and we did see those numbers on daytime workers here, almost 34,000, right now with more on the way, as well as the significant increase in multifamily rental units in and around the downtown area. I feel like this was a great tool for us to forecast demand and to look at what sort of success we might hope for with not just 314 Clematis, but with our Main Street and our downtown district in general. So I feel like with all the things that we see coming, if there's ever been a time where we could say, this is an opportunity that we should take, I think it seems like now. All the indicators point in the direction that we could benefit from this type of public investment to create this type of opportunity for entrepreneurs, small business owners, et cetera.
Okay, yes.
And just the other part that, just as a footnote to this data, it's consistent with the data that we're seeing with the FAU Mobility Intelligence Project. So it's extrapolating potential based on real-time data that we know is what we're experiencing on a regular basis in the city. So we're getting smarter with the data that we have.
Okay, Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. I just had one more clarifying question because maybe I misinterpreted on the first iteration. When we were talking about a single market tenant, I guess I took it as kind of the same tenant that we have, that's one single business, a big box tenant, that kind of thing. But if we are talking about kind of a centralized Grand View Market type operator, does that not bring us back to the same scenario one and scenario two? Because if in scenario one, I'm the one single tenant lease, I can see what the buildout numbers are for either one of the scenarios, you know, maybe some other third scenario I can think of, but the buildout scenarios for me under scenario one and two, under a multi-tenant, is what the city is going to ask me to implement? And why would I go under lease of single tenant one knowing that multi-tenant costs are in front of me, you know? Does that not bring us back into two scenarios?
So the question asked by Commissioner Shof was that with the full market space without the office tenant, correct?
So we have one single market tenant. Under the single market tenant, you're going to ask me to implement either a 50/50 or a multi-tenant. I already see what the costs are laid out here by the city on those two multi-tenant scenarios. It doesn't make financial sense for me, single operator, to go under contract with the city knowing that these are the costs that are in front of me.
Understood. Mike, could you take us to the two, to the scenarios, scenario two and then scenarios 1A and 1B?
The plans, I'm assuming you mean?
The side-by-side comparison of those scenarios, one and two.
So Rafael, if I could just kind of point out where I'm coming from. If under a single market tenant, my gross rent that I'm paying is 686.
Yes.
But I know gross rent to me from my, either scenario, is only going to come in at 363, why would I undertake that scenario knowing I'm going to be 300K down?
Right.
Makes sense?
It does make sense. That's a question we're going to have to explore more deeply, is what are the real costs on these? I mean, as was pointed out, this was a back-of-the-napkin analysis, and I think that what we need is to take the next step, depending on which scenario we're going to choose, and then get right down to the brass tacks with an architect and a GC, and then we get real numbers.
Sounds great.
All right, it's 10:55, so what is it that you're looking to get from us today?
Mayor James, we are looking for direction on which scenario we should pursue in detail, whether that's a split that includes an office tenant for a significant portion of the space, or it is an entire multi-tenant, 14,000 square feet of multi-tenancy versus a split. And that, and you know, I guess the multi-tenant could be either way, where we rent it out to one operator or where it's managed with each individual space having a tenant.
Okay. Any strong feelings either way? Board members. Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. I guess if I had to rank order them, I think the 50/50 split is less volatile because you'll get rent coming in from the office space and then as merchants turn over, but I'm equally as happy with the multi-tenant market. I guess my third choice would be single tenant market again because I don't think the economics add up. Chris has a comment.
Yes, Chris.
Yeah, and just to be clear, Mayor, the recommendation of the CRA and the DDA was first choice, the scenario to the 50/50, just to be clear.
For that exact reason that you pointed out, Commissioner.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, let me approach this another way. Does anyone have any objection to accepting the recommendation of the DDA and CRA, the first choice, the 50/50?
I have a question about it, Mayor.
Okay.
I couldn't tell in the presentation where the entrance in the rear alley was. And also in this first choice, I know that it was mentioned during the discussion that if we did the 50/50 scenario, that it was a recommendation that the rear should be in harmony with the marketplace. Is that what the recommendation is if we look at the 50/50 or that was just an option as well?
Well, I'll take first your comment, your question about the entrance. I think that would need to be determined based on architectural plans and probably structural analysis of the building, of that back wall, right? I mean, that wasn't yet determined.
Yeah, but it would have, it would have an entrance for sure, we just don't know how big.
How big? That's, so we would have an entrance for sure, we just don't know how big and exactly where on the alley side. And then the office space in the back, I think the comment was that whatever tenant or tenants would be in there would be tenants that would be compatible with that type of use as an adjacent use. For example, would that be an accounting firm or would that be something like 1909, where you have a collection of, maybe even individuals that are office tenants that want that adjacent activated area, that socialization space, and even where they host meetings? Some of the, one of the locations that Street Sense shared with us actually has a mixing area that serves the office tenant on the edge of that market, and it's conducive to that type of work environment. It's kind of like if you walk into a coffee shop and, you know, how many business meetings are going on in subculture coffee or in Solento? We just came from one in Solento. So that's the type of environment that they're looking to facilitate.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to give direction. So is there any objection to accepting the recommendation of the CRA and DDA, which is the 50/50 scenario? Any objection to that? All right, I see a lot of shaking heads, which means there's no objection, which seems to be direction we're headed. Yeah, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. No objection to that, but just do we have maybe some timelines set in, built into this so that, I mean, we've been talking a lot about this back-of-the-napkin financials and that the third option here maybe isn't as optimal because of the way the finances work out? What if this first option, we find out that there's not as much interest? Do we have some timelines built in so that we might look at other scenarios?
I mean, we can get those for you. I mean, at this time, we don't have those timelines, but whatever the direction is of the board, we're going to move pretty aggressively. And if there's a problem, we're going to be able to change quickly, and I'll bring it to your attention if we identify, but most of the market analysis is pretty thorough.
Great, thank you.
And please keep in mind that those numbers are turnkey, you know, right to the last, except for those last finish details, which I don't think was our intention.
Correct.
Our idea is that a tenant would bring, would have skin in the game.
Right.
So the buildout number would be smaller than what is forecast for the turnkey option.
Okay, so what are next steps? So we, I believe we have direction, we've given you, 50/50, what are next steps?
We'll be sitting down with the architect, moving forward with, well, let me back up, contractual steps to secure the architect and the contractor, sitting down with this information with the architect to start working on designs, and then ultimately developing a budget that we'll bring back to you for the overall project.
All right, and are we looking to ultimately engage with a single operator that will be doing this? Are we going to be the property manager?
We'll bring back all those details based on the 50/50, on the 50/50 split, to bring back what the business plan will be for that setup.
And Mayor, we're going to keep Street Sense at the table for these next steps, just in case we do have those questions, we'll bounce them off of them.
Please convey our thanks to them. This is very helpful, and it's good to have now a plan in mind. Anything else on this? All right, I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters, so I would suggest we adjourn the CRA portion, and in two minutes, 11:03, why don't we convene the Mayor Commission Work Session? All right? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Street Sense team, thank you all.